How are you doing?
Good.
Not too bad. Congratulations.
Okay, because there are everyone one day. Everyone's different with the rocking and with stiff on that.
There's everything in there that they don't like if they don't like it. Right, it's it's they play.
Pursuant to section eighty-four dash fourteen eleven of the Nebraska statutes, notice of this meeting was given on January twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one. The meeting will convene at six-thirty P M. and visitors may obtain a request to be heard form from staff for any presentation they may have for the meeting. In accordance with policy, the request to be heard forms must be submitted to the secretary within the first five minutes of the board meeting in order to be heard at this meeting. Agenda items are subject to reordering at the discretion of the board president. Please attend the entire meeting to ensure you are able to hear any discussion. Pursuant to section eighty-four dash fourteen eleven of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District zero-zero-zero-one and the Board of Educational Service Unit Number Nineteen will be held on Thursday, February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one at six-thirty P M. in the Board Meeting Room of the Teacher Administrative Center, thirty-two fifteen Cummings Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to section eighty-four dash fourteen twelve of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Board Meeting Room on the north wall. Please stand us and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a mission under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
The O P S, the O P S vision, every student, every day, prepared for success. The O P S mission, to prepare all students for success in college, career, and life.
Okay, roll call, Mr. Ray.
Cassidy.
Here.
Erdnberger.
Here.
Head. Present. Holman.
Present.
Cracky.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Snipes.
Present.
Snow. Tealyn.
Here.
Eight present.
Ray. Um, next we have school spotlight, Jeremy Maskel. Thank you.
Well, good evening, President Holman, Vice President Erdnberger, members of the Board, and Superintendent Logan. Our O P S proud spotlight this week features several students who earned recognition as semifinalists in the National Merit Scholarship Program. Again, the students tonight are seniors who earned semifinalist status in the competition, and the finalists will be announced soon. The National Merit Scholarship Program puts these students on the radar of businesses, colleges, and universities, providing a helpful stepping stone for their bright futures. In this video, you'll be hearing from school counseling administrator Jen Walker, followed by four seniors who will move forward in the application process for the program.
So, a student who is, um, named as a finalist or semifinalist by the National Merit Scholarship Program is being, uh, recognized for their success on the P S A T.
Now, what happens is that you take the P S A T, you get a score, and college board, like, create maybe a secondary score based of how, based off how well you did. Then there's a list of cutouts, cutoffs in between for every state, and if you reach a certain threshold, or if you go above it, you become a semifinalist.
And really what that means, becoming a semifinalist or finalist, is that, um, it's, it's really just like a type of special recognition for certain scholarships and college applications. It puts you in the running for a little boost, really, to, for getting into college and, um, being able to afford it.
And so, one thing I think that's really important is that O P S does offer the P S A T at all seven high schools. Um, it is not something that we have to do, but it's something that we do because we think it's important for our students to have the opportunity to take that test in a setting that they're comfortable in.
Uh, I'm gonna be attending University of Nebraska-Lincoln through biomedical engineering. Um, I'm looking at Lincoln, I'm looking at University of Chicago, I'm looking at USC, I'm looking at Michigan. I would really encourage, um, schools to help students with the P S A T, even just like saying, hey, the P S A T can lead to some, uh, good money, so it's definitely worth studying for.
And congratulations to our national merit semifinalists.
Thank you, Mr. Maskel. Um, I forgot to ask for a motion to excuse Mr. Snow's, um, absence. Could I please get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it was moved by Mr. Smith and seconded by Mr. Tealyn. So what do we do now?
I'd like to pull my motion.
Thank you.
All right, moving on now to Board and Superintendent Communications, Mr. Roberts' treasures report.
We're glad to have you back, Mr. Roberts.
Yes, very nice to see you.
It's great to be back, thank you. President Holman, members of the Board, Superintendent Logan, the financial statements for the period ended December thirty-first, twenty-twenty have been finalized and submitted for your review.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Dr. Logan.
Good evening, President Holman, members of the Board, and those watching the live stream and those here in person, and lots of staff here tonight. Um, thank you so much for being here. I'd like to begin with our phased return to five days per week of in-person learning. Tomorrow morning, we will welcome our elementary and middle school students back to five days a week of in-person instruction. A personal story of a, uh, the grandchild of a person who works in our office who just lost, uh, one of her, uh, front teeth and is so excited about returning to Crest Ridge tomorrow for, uh, uh, for the four-day week this week. And, uh, she told her grandma about, uh, she liked the three-two, but that she really, really wanted to come, um, every day and, and how much she, uh, missed, uh, her friends. And, um, we've heard, uh, hundreds of stories like that, uh, from board members and from, uh, the public, and we are excited, uh, to welcome our students back, our elementary and middle school students back five days a week in person, but those personal stories certainly, uh, are touching. Our elementary and middle school teachers had a professional learning day today to prepare for this transition. Our high school students will return to five days a week of in-person learning beginning Wednesday, February seventeenth. Schools will continue using our layered, layered approach to health and safety. This includes enhanced cleaning measures, regular disinfecting of high-touch surfaces, frequent hand washing, and hand sanitizer use, social distancing when possible, limiting transitions throughout schools, adapting meal procedures, and the use of district-provided facial coverings. All are part of our comprehensive effort to limit the spread of COVID- nineteen. We also continue our O P S Protects pilot program, offering testing, testing in partnership with U N M C, One World, and the Charles Drew Health Centers. In addition, we have some additional testing that has been provided for our high schools, uh, through Test Nebraska. This, the data that we receive from our test helps us to make decisions for the protection of students, staff, and their families. We are thankful for the hard work of our teachers and staff, the resilience of our students, and the support of our families as we proceed with the next phase of our return to in-person learning. Soon, the majority of our students will return to a more normal routine and schedule. We look forward to having our children in school in person five days a week. Turning to our agreement with the Omaha Education Association, recognizing their investment in our students through challenging times. Later this evening, our Chief Human Resource Officer, Mr. Charles Wakefield, will present information on our Omaha Education Association contract for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, and twenty-twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school years. I want to be careful not to steal Mr. Wakefield's thunder ahead of his presentation. I did, however, want to share that we are pleased to have mutually reached a contract agreement that reflects the priority requests made by the bargaining unit, as well as our school district's recognition of the vital role our teachers played this past year and every year, ensuring we can serve our families and children in the midst of incredibly trying time. Our teachers' commitment and the personal sacrifices they've made are recognized, appreciated, and I believe reflected in the contract details that you will see later tonight. At our last board meeting, we shared information that our students' academic progress and some of the challenges our students have faced. Our community and the country, for that matter, has learned plenty about what works and what poses challenges for our children when there is sudden disruption, abrupt change, and the removal of a normal predictable daily routine. One of the things we've learned for certain is we can give every student an internet-enabled device, but we cannot recreate the close personal connection with teachers and peers experienced inside our schools. Our leadership teams remain engaged in ongoing discussions about our short and long-term academic recovery plans. Just this last week, we garnered, uh, um, feedback from our middle school and high school parents, uh, during our quarterly meetings, uh, in reference to ideas that they have about how their students, uh, need to recover, uh, learning that, uh, has not been able to occur. We intend to continue having discussions and conversations as a community about the best go-forward path for our children in the weeks and months to come. As part of the twenty-eighteen bond work, we've committed to regular ongoing communication updates with the community and with our families. Recently, we sent an email update to incoming and current high school families about the opening of our new high schools. We have two of the high school principals here who have been appointed. Um, Dr. Carrie Carr, who will open the school at Sixtieth and L., if we could stand Dr. Carr so we can recognize you. And the inimitable Mr. Thomas Lee from Northwest High School going to one-fifty-sixth and Ida. Thank you for being here and thank you for taking on the challenge. Changes will take effect in the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year ahead of the opening. These changes will not impact our current high school students. Our student assignment plan is being updated to reflect transportation eligibility. In addition to our high schools, we will open two new elementary schools and one middle school in the fall of twenty-twenty-two. In recent, in the addition, in addition to the recent email, we will soon provide updates to families in live virtual meetings. The Board of Education will receive an update on the student assignment plan sometime this spring. We're highlighting these in progress, in-progress changes now to ensure our families are paying attention to information updates about the new school, school boundary changes, and upcoming changes to our school's student assignment plan. For more information, we encourage families to visit boundary dot O P S dot org or contact your child's school. We have several, uh, kudos to close out tonight. First of all, uh, this is school counseling week, and we recognize all of our school counselors throughout our district for their incredible work, and as a bonus or the cherry on top, we have the Middle School Counselor of the Year right here in our district, Mrs. Zermeño, Ms. Zermeño, from Norris Middle School, and Ms. Hutz from Walnut Hill Elementary School. So that is even better news for, uh, school counseling week. Uh, in, in addition, uh, we have, um, Ms. Luth, Ms. Luthke, 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 got it right, who also is in the audience tonight, who is, uh, taking on the role of secondary partnerships. We've been meeting with our, all of our partners, all of our foundation heads, um, as we, uh, begin the high school work that will impact these fine leaders and the students and families that they will serve. This concludes my remarks for this evening. Thank you, Dr. Holman and Board of Education.
Thank you, Dr. Logan. Board members, Ms. Cassidy?
Thank you, President Holman. Um, I just wanted to take a quick moment as we are ready to undergo yet another change, our, to our schools with going back now again to full in-person. Um, I just want to take a quick moment to thank everyone involved in all of our schools. Simply just thank everyone. It's, it's gonna be another transition tomorrow for our elementary and our middle school. So I want to take a minute to thank all of our teachers, our paraprofessionals, um, our nutrition staff, uh, bus drivers, all the administrative staff in our buildings that do so much, um, and especially our custodians and our engineers. You all have had quite the year, and we're very grateful for all of you, and the things that you've had to do continuing to disinfect and move your classrooms around to try to fit tables and desk and accommodate more students tomorrow is not an easy feat, so we just want you to know that, um, you know, we are, we are with you, and we are very grateful that you are taking on all of our, our young ones, mine in particular. I'm, I'm so excited that my, two of mine are going back. I've, it's, it's, it's good to have them back. I know it's, um, it's a scary time, and we appreciate all of the protocols that are in place by our district, and we just appreciate all of the staff that is continuing to keep those protocols in place and keep our state, students safe. So just want to wish everyone luck tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cassidy. Mr. Tealyn.
Thank you, Dr. Holman. Uh, I first want to thank the many parents and educators who've contacted me in the short time as a board member. Uh, I've carefully read all of their messages, and by and large, they demonstrate a real wealth of care and empathy for our staff and our students. Uh, recently, I've received a number of reactions to the changes in our district. Uh, we've experienced a lot of change over the last year, and the district has announced some significant changes to come. Some of these changes, uh, have been imposed on us by the necessity of responding to the fast-changing science and circumstances of a serious pandemic. Other changes respond to the call of improving academic outcomes for the students that we're here to serve. The changes required to carry on the work of educating our young people during this pandemic asked a lot of our teachers, our staff, our parents, and our students, and the pandemic isn't over. And as we transition back to the five-day learning, uh, model and look toward the changes we have planned for the summer and coming school years, we see that more is required of us all, and many of us are already tired, but we can't wait. There will always be reasons to wait, one more month, one more semester, one more year. We must, uh, find a way to embrace these changes. We must find a way to embrace these changes. While OPS works so well for so many students, we have room to make improvements. I see my responsibility as a board member to support a sense of urgency for these improvements. But improvement means change. It means using every available opportunity for learning. That means summer and, yes, snow days. It means adopting best practices supported by research. And that is why I'm in full support of the shift academies and pathways. And it's why I am in support of the return to five-day learning, which is encouraged by the CDC. Not everything we try will work right out of the gate. Parents and teachers have shared, have shared with me a broad range of experiences regarding snow days. We clearly have room to improve, and I trust that we will. I have also received a number of concerns about class sizes. I know the administration is paying close attention to this and is reviewing every classroom. Going forward, I will continue to support best practices that will improve outcomes for our students. I will also monitor the changes we make to ensure they are moving the needle and to ensure they are delivering educational opportunities equitably. Our community wants district, our district to improve outcomes. And so while we are tired from an exhausting year, I ask our communities to, to support OPS in the changes it is making for our students, to be open-minded about a school system that looks different from the one that you experienced, to be patient as we evaluate and course correct. Keep contacting your teachers and principals and administrators and board members so that we can identify where we need improvement. I cannot promise you that improvement will be swift, but if we keep our common commitment to educating our young people as our focal point, it will keep us moving forward together. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Tealyn. Ms. Crackey?
Not all of the messages from the schools are going to be gloom and doom. I have come across one, my highest school, that I represent, Verk, and they are ready to go. They are waiting for the word, and they are ready for summer school. They are ready for a recovery plan to help all of those students that they want to help graduate. So they want to also do something with credit recovery. But the anticipation that I hear from that end and the excitement of the principal leads me to believe that they're all ready to go. And the retired teachers have already been calling, and they want to substitute if someone isn't there in that spot. So that is a really good news story because, you know, sometimes it's hard to get substitutes, especially right now. So everything was on a schedule to just go, and that was really encouraging to hear that from the high school. So I just wanted to note that and the excitement that they had. They can't wait to do that. And I bet you that's everywhere. I bet when the teachers get in the rooms, they're going to be so happy to see the students there. And let's just hope they can maintain that happiness and everything goes well. That's all.
Thank you so much, Ms. Crackey. Anyone else? All right. And I would just like to end by echoing my colleagues' comments tonight. And then also just say congratulations to our two principals who will be moving going to two brand-new buildings. Congratulations to you both. I am very saddened. I've told Mr. Lee this and Dr. Logan. I'm very saddened to have Mr. Lee leaving Northwest because that is my, my high school, and I know that he's done a tremendous job there. And I know that he will be very, very missed, but he is definitely the perfect choice to open up a brand-new school. I'm very well-deserved for it, so congratulations. And then also, I wanted to say happy first day of the first five in-person days to all of our teachers and staff and everyone who works to get our, our kiddos back to school safe and sound. Thank you. Alrighty. Now, moving on to public comment. Masks are required to be worn in order to speak during public comment. If you are not wearing a mask, a mask will be provided to you at the podium to wear while speaking. We have two speakers who have submitted request-to-speak forms. The board has adopted policy 84, excuse me, 8346, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. That same policy limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you respect that time limit. Mr. Ray will let you, when you have one minute remaining and when you have 30 seconds remaining. Given the number of speakers, we ask that, to the extent you are able, you keep your comments brief so that we can hear from as many of you as possible in the allotted time. If you are in need of an interpreter, please let Mr. Ray know, and one will be provided for you. We understand that people have strong feelings about the issues they come to speak about. We ask that you respect the opinions of all who speak and that you refrain from applause or other outbursts during the presentations. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you not mention the student or staff member by name and instead provide that information to Mr. Ray. He will assist us in looking into those types of specifics for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak and would like to submit any written commentary, please provide it to Mr. Ray. He will make sure each member of the board gets a copy. As a reminder, we ask that you please spell your name and state your address before you begin your public comment. It is now 6:52 PM, and our first speaker is Ms. Walta Suedod.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Walta Suedod, W-A-L-T-A-S-U-E-D-O-D-D. I live at 3233 Madison Street, Omaha, 68107. I am the Omaha Education Association Retired President. After a meeting with Senator Colderman, who is the Chair of the Nebraska Legislative Retirement Committee, he wanted to explain to all the BTC members about his five bills that he was going to present in the legislature. Only three of those bills will affect the governance and management of OSERS. None of the changes address the Omaha Public Schools' unfunded liability or the annual required contribution, which is called the ARC, to our retirement system. The changes will cost money for our taxpayers of Omaha and the OSERS members. OPS paid for the study on transferring OSERS management a little over $70,000 and agreed to continue the transition and pay for the IT-related matters pertaining to the transfer, which will cost between $3.8 to $6.1 million. OSERS will be charged through members' retirement funds $1.7 million in two years with management going, or changes going to EMPIRES and the unknown cost in the study. Senator Colderman believes the unknowns will be answered after the compliance audit using the State Audit Department, which will charge, of course, OSERS retirement funds. What happens if the unanswered questions are not answered? Senator Colderman stated, "If the Nebraska Legislative Committee and the PERB Board do not like the compliance audit's findings, the transfer will not go through." Does this mean OPS will be responsible for the governance and management of OSERS? The bills will become an omnibus bill, and an emergency clause will be attached to them. It all will go into effect at the same time. Why not complete the compliance audit first, then depending on the results, address the transfer of governance and management? These bills are being used like a cart-before-the-horse expression. If you don't know the unknowns, how can you make a decision about transferring the organization down into, down to Lincoln? We need to take care of the compliance audit first, so the unknowns are identified. The placement bill that happens in 2021 could be used at that time, transferring management and governance over to EMPIRES. But to make it perfectly clear, OEA retired members of OSERS are not in favor of transferring our retirement system to Lincoln, changing management to EMPIRES, and changing the makeup of the Board of Trustees. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Suedod. Next, we have Robert Miller. Evening, Mr. Miller.
Good evening. Robert Miller, R-O-B-E-R-T-M-I-L-L-E-R. I reside at 7301 North 107th Avenue in Omaha, 68122. Good evening, President Dr. Holman, Vice President Erdenberger, Superintendent Dr. Logan, and members of the board. My name is Robert Miller, and I'm the proud president of the Omaha Education Association. There are three things I went to bring to your attention this evening. The first is an item you'll be acting upon, which is J1B, which is the tentative agreement between Omaha Public Schools and the Omaha Education Association for the 2021, 2022, 2022, 2023 school years. During the negotiation process, there was good dialogue and languages, language that changed due to that dialogue. And the OEA believes we are moving in the right direction to address how valued the veteran teachers are of this district. This process was not adversarial, and together, we worked towards an agreement that is a step in the right direction for educators. Our membership has recently ratified this agreement with 81.36% in support and 18.64% against. I ask for your support of our tentative agreement. Secondly, I would like to talk about space. Tomorrow, students will arrive in the elementary and middle school buildings for the five-day in-person instruction. They will be greeted by staff who have worked extremely hard in preparing their rooms with the safety measures outlined accordingly. Whether it's six feet or three feet, socially distanced, some barely even two feet, the students will be masked unless they are eating breakfast or lunch in their classrooms, and many will. Staff will do what they do best and make it work. OPS has guidelines to follow, but if you look at this room here tonight, you all are safely distanced from one another. The chairs behind me are safely distanced separately. There is security at the door to make sure there's only enough people in here for the chairs with an overflow room if necessary. A stark difference from the classrooms on what they will look like tomorrow when students arrive. We understand the need for mitigated risk where possible, but understand how difficult it can be seen by a teacher who at a moment's notice must fit another desk or table into their classroom that they've been sharing with students for over seven hours a day. A concern for many is whether or not the parents are being fully aware that their students may not be socially distanced from their peers and curious who will be blamed, whether it be the teacher, the administrator, or the district for not being in compliance. Finally, the vaccine. Members have been told by the OEA that if they fall within the categories to receive the vaccine, that they have been, that have been laid out by the Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services or the Douglas County Health, they should take advantage of it. With the recent statement from the governor that gives local health director the autonomy on how the 10% that has been set aside to be used, it is our hope that educators be at the top of that list. OEA acknowledges the fact that OPS and its leadership has no control on when staff are eligible to receive the vaccine. But we hope that while they are in conversation with those individuals that can give a yes, that they continue to make the ask to get educators the needed vaccine. Teachers are fearful for their health and the health of their loved ones. The OEA is willing to partner with OPS to make the ask to those who can give us a yes. In closing, OEA asks for your support for the two-year agreement. To be aware of the space we are offered in this room, but our students do not have for their learning conditions. And we urge that OPS pushes the Director of Health of Douglas County to get educators the vaccine that is desperately needed for the safety of their family and themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Moving on to the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
No approval.
Second.
It was moved by Ms. Crackey and seconded by Mr. Head. Any discussion? Any extensions?
I need to abstain from, I need to abstain from I-12. Claim C, please.
Okay, Ms. Cassidy will be abstaining from claim report C. Okay. Any other discussion or extensions? Roll call, Mr. Ray?
Holman?
Aye.
Crackey?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Snipes?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Tealyn?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Erdenberger?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Nine, nine.
Motion passes. Moving on to legislative update. And Mr. Head will take care of that for us today. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Holman. And I'd like to start off, if I may, by just thanking every member of the legislative committee. I know we've been extremely busy the last few weeks as the session kicks off here, but I really, really appreciate everyone's time, thought, input. It's, it's extremely valuable to the, to the committee as we make these decisions. So thank you again to everyone on the committee. With that, I'll go ahead and jump right in. And I'd like to do it a little bit out of order from where the attachments are on the agenda, so please bear with me. But I wanted to start off with the position statement on OSERS. So I'll just go ahead and read the proposed statement, if that's all right. So the new proposed OSERS statement is, "The Board of Education of the Omaha Public Schools hereby reaffirms its commitment to ensuring the long-term, long-term stability of the Omaha, Omaha School Employees Retirement System, OSERS. We generally support the efforts of the Nebraska Legislature to harmonize OSERS with the Nebraska School Employees Retirement System. We applaud the introduction of the legislative package to transfer management of OSERS to the Public Employees Retirement Board as contemplated in the LB-31 report. In particular, we support designating the OPS Board of Education as the OSERS Board of Trustees for all matters and liability prior to July 1, 2016, and as successor in interest to the OSERS Board of Trustees in all planned matters as designated by the bill, specifically that refers to LB-144. Clarifying the exception for recent retirees to be rehired 30 days following a bona fide separation to provide temporary service, including substitute service on an intermittent basis and creating a new definition of regular employees as one hired on a full-time basis of at least 30 hours per week. That's LB-146. Beginning the process of transferring the management of OSERS to the PERB to be completed September 1, 2024. That's LB-147. And reinstating the authority of the OPS Board of Education to administer OSERS in place of the OSERS Board of Trustees. That's LB-582. Despite the fact that neither a compliance audit of OSERS nor an audit of OSERS by the Auditor of Public Accounts were recommended by the LB-31 study report, we understand the rationale for completion of both. Given our support for the other components of the legislative package, we also offer our support for completion of both a compliance audit and an audit by the Auditor of Public Accounts, and that relates to LB-145. So that is the OSERS statement. I'll jump now to our position statements on TOSA. So the TOSA position statement is more or less the same as it was last year. "The Board of Education of the Omaha Public Schools hereby reaffirms its support for the following key principles regarding the Tax Equity and Educational Opportunity Support Act. The Board supports the efforts of the Legislature through TOSA to equalize resources to ensure educational opportunity for all students across the state. Within the formula, the Board especially supports additional funding for children in poverty, English-language learners, and early childhood education, additional waiting for focus schools, funding for transportation, and the averaging adjustment. The Board opposes changes to TOSA that are de-equalizing. The Board wishes to emphasize that one of the initial objectives of TOSA was to provide a stable, predictable system by which school districts could reasonably project, plan, and budget for their annual state aid allocation. As such, the Board opposes annual modifications to TOSA that are designed to minimize increases or even reduce the level of state aid funding. The Board supports continued strong funding for special education. The Board supports consideration by the Legislature of a mechanism to provide for equalization of facility renovation and construction among school districts." Then our final position statement is our statement on the diversion of educational resources. It says, "The Omaha Public Schools Board of Education opposes any legislative effort to divert public resources to educational programs that are not governed by publicly-elected boards, who are accountable to the citizens for their use of tax dollars." So that is all of our position statements. And now I'd like to jump into the listing of bills. And we've got roughly 200 bills here that the committee has considered and, and heard. So what I'd like to do, if that's okay with you, Dr. Holman, is just jump through and specifically cover the ones that we have a support or oppose position on. And then if anybody has questions on the others, we'd obviously be more than happy to talk on those.
Yes, thank you.
Yep. So the first one is LB-132. It's Senator DeBoer's bill to create a school financing review. It's Senator DeBoer's bill to create a school financing review commission. The Legislative Committee recommends that we oppose that bill, and I am actually planning to head down to Lincoln to testify against that one tomorrow morning. The next one, LB-135 by Senator Wishart, it increases the special education reimbursement from the state. That is a bill that we, we fully support. We supported that bill in the past in, in different forms as well, just encouraging the state to, to finally fully fund special education services. LB-144 is the next one from Senator Coulterman. That is part of the OSERS package. It designates the OPS Board of Education as the trustees for the, for the OSERS board. LB-145 from Senator Coulterman is the OSERS audits. We recommend support of that one. LB-146 against Senator Coulterman, creates the new definition of termination of employment and bona fide separation of a school employee. Specifically, that one is helpful for us with substitute teachers, so we support that one fully. LB-147 against Senator Coulterman, that transfers management of OSERS to the PERB. We recommend support. LB-198, Senator Vargas, it's Student Discipline Act. We have various, various concerns with that bill. We recommend that we oppose it. LB-210 by Senator Merman allows homeschool students to participate on public school teams. We recommend that one be opposed. LB-288 by Senator Walls is the annual bill to delay the certification of TOSA. We recommend that we oppose that one, again, like we have last year, specifically our stance is that the state legislature shouldn't, shouldn't mess with the TOSA formula every year. Instead, they should fully fund education. LB-323 by Senator Walls is, provides pandemic aid through TOSA. That one, we recommend support. That one would be extremely important to the, to the Omaha Public Schools. I know this year through TOSA with, you know, not needing as much transportation and other services like that, if this bill isn't passed, we could potentially lose a lot of money in state aid next year because of that. Let's see, LB-364 by Senator Linehan, the Opportunity Scholarships Act, and Dr. Holman, you did a great job last week testifying on our behalf against that bill, so thank you for that. LB-396 by Senator Brant is the Farm-to-School Program Act. We recommend support of that. That one partners local farms with school districts with the help of the Nebraska Department of Education to encourage schools to serve Nebraska products at lunch. LB-408 by Senator Bresi is a three percent cap on property tax requests. I testified against that for the district last week. The rationale is that the three percent cap is a, is an arbitrary number, and it definitely invades on, on local control. You know, we as school board members participate in the budget process, we understand the budget process, and at the end of the day, we're the ones who should have the authority to decide what our budget is, and we're the ones who should be held accountable for those budgeting decisions. LB-5 by Senator Carol Blood adopts the Purple Star School Act. We recommend support of that bill. That would allow the school to, or the school district, I apologize, to work with the State Department of Education to recognize our, our support for military families and, and earn a Purple Star designation to show military families that we're a military-friendly district. Let's see, LB-582 by the Retirement Committee is another one of the OSERS bills. We recommend support of that. LB-88 by Senator Morfeld is the Student Journalism Free Speech Act. We recommend opposition to that bill. Senator Morfeld introduced a very similar bill last year, and it, it really just impedes upon the school district's opportunity to, you know, treat journalism students as actual students and, and help them learn about the actual journalism process, so we oppose that bill. LR-22CA by Senator Linehan is a three percent tax, property tax growth cap. It's a constitutional amendment. We oppose that for the same reasons as LB-408. And that is it for the bills. So you have before you the report of the Legislative Committee dated today, which includes the OPS Critical Bill Summary, the Position Statements on TOSA, and Diversion of Educational Resources, and the Position Statement on Principles Related to OSERS. On behalf of the Legislative Committee, I move approval of the report of the committee, including the positions set forth in the OPS Critical Bill Summary, the Position Statements on TOSA, and Diversion of Educational Resources, and the Position Statement on Principles Relating to OSERS as presented.
There's a motion by Mr. Head, and we didn't need a second, but thank you, Ms. Crackey.
Are there any questions?
Yes, I have a comment. I want to go to the LB-201, the participation. In the past, there's, there was much discussion, many times, and many forces came, et cetera. And it, as I recall, it is stated that if the student wanting to participate on something within the district, they have to be currently also taking some courses in the district to what number amount, I'm not certain what the number is, but they could be homeschooled, but they have to be participating in something in OPS in order to be able to qualify to participate on the swim team or something like that.
Yep, yes, the, the current requirement is that a homeschool student in order to participate on an athletic team has to be enrolled in two courses within, within the public school district, and so what this bill would do is completely do away with that requirement, so a homeschool student could just show up at an OPS school and say, hey, I want to, I want to play basketball, I want to play football, and we wouldn't necessarily have any idea who that, who that child is.
So in other words, they could be in a private school and come and be on the football team, as opposed to the students in our district not being able to be on the football team at that school?
I believe this is just homeschool students, so it wouldn't be private.
Well, private, pro school, homeschool, whatever, that, that isn't, that isn't how we've done it before, I don't believe. I think they had to participate in at least two courses, as you said, in order to be participating on the teams. Is that still in effect?
Yep, yeah, that's, that's still our position. Our, our committee recommendation is to oppose the bill, so we would keep the, the current policy of requiring students to be enrolled in at least two classes.
I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Snow, do you have a question?
Yes, Dr. Holman, I do have a question. So the bills that were written with Senator Coulterman and the Retirement Committee, I don't know who this is addressed to, was this written by the Retirement Committee and the Chair, or was this in concert with the district or the Better Together Coalition, the way the bills are written? Who collaborated on writing those?
Yep, yeah, Megan, I don't know if that's something you might be able to provide some more information on as well.
Certainly, so as part of what we've done in the past, we've usually always had a position statement in the past on OSERS, on TOSA, and on general use of public funds for school funding. So it, as part of the Legislative Committee's review of the previous position statements, the three position statements were updated and forwarded to you. We drafted the current statement at direction of the conversation of the committee so that it was provided to the committee to forward to the full board upon request. We updated it so previously, as you can see, if you look at the current version versus the new version, it was relating to LB-31. Obviously, that study is now done, so we needed to update that OSERS statement to provide that information.
Sorry, understand, it's a...
I think his question was about...
The bills, so if you, 143, 144, 145, 146, I mean, and when we originally created LB, worked with LB-31, we had that in, I think, two shell bills were, came out of the, or with it. This is, these are very...
So 144 is the shell bill, in the five-piece complex of the bills?
Forty-five, I'm just, I'm just wondering, is this from Senator Coulterman and the Retirement Committee?
Yes.
Or did the district approach them?
From Senator, great question, Senator Snow.
Senator Snow, thank you.
Sorry.
That, that sounds good, thank you.
Great question, Mr. Snow. It is, if all of these bills were drafted by Senator Coulterman, specifically even 582, the district was not, didn't even have until recently conversations with regard to that on 582.
Thank you. I, I assume that, I just wanted for a hundred percent to know that OPS did not write these bills and go to the Senator to carry them for us. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, roll call, Mr. Ray.
Smith.
Aye.
Snipes.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdnberger.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Nine, nine.
Motion passes. Moving on to Day 1B, approval of the proposed master agreement with the Omaha Education Association for the 2021, 2022, and 2022, 2023 school years. We have Mr. Wakefield with us here tonight. How you doing, Mr. Wakefield?
I'm good, thank you. Good evening, and I do want to say I practice good evening. Those of you that know me know that I always start with good morning. It's also written here, so I make sure I say good evening. Good evening, President Dr. Holman, Vice President Erdnberger, Dr. Logan, members of the board. Thank you for allowing me to discuss the proposed negotiated agreement with Omaha Educators Association for the 2021, 2022, and the 2022, 2023 school years. We successfully completed our negotiations with OEA the week of January 11th. After a careful review of the proposed agreement with both OEA and the district, OEA completed the ratification process on January 30th with members ratifying the contract, as you heard earlier tonight. Tonight, I am sharing the agreement with you, seeking your approval of this tentative agreement. We have agreed to a two-year contract with our teachers that provide teachers a four-point-six-three percent total package in year one and a four-point-five-seven percent total package in year two. This agreement provides increases in salary, an adjustment to insurance at the request of OEA, a revision to salary schedules, and some changes in language that I will share with you today. Teachers will receive an increase to base salary of $500 in year one and an additional $1,000 in year two. This will move the starting salary for a new teacher to $43,000 next school year and $44,000 for the school year thereafter, placing us, or continuing to place us at the top of the metro district area. Additionally, we've made modifications to the salary structure to recognize our experienced teachers. As you can see on the slide, experienced teachers beginning on step eleven in the Masters column will move from a two percent increase for each step to a three percent increase for each step. Additionally, in year two, we again modify that salary structure so that teachers beginning at step sixteen in the Masters column will move from that three percent increase per step to a four percent increase per step. This provides our most experienced teachers with master degrees and above significant salary increases, recognizing their value to our students. In addition to these salary enhancements, we will also begin recognizing fifteen years of outside service, beginning with new hires in August 2021. This is an increase from twelve years currently and will help us hire more experienced teachers from other districts. We have increased the payout for unused personal leave from $150 per day to $185 per day, giving teachers some incentive not to just use their personal leave if they don't need it. And we have agreed to language that supports remote teaching on days when we cannot have classes in person due to weather or other factors. In addition to these changes, one of the things I am personally most excited about is an additional five percent variance pay, an additional five percent increase for all of our special education teachers. This additional pay, above and beyond base salary, it recognizes the additional documentation, time, IEP requirements that a special education teacher has. In addition, it provides the district the ability to entice special education teachers to join our district in an area that is in extreme shortage across the nation. This is a good thing for our students as we continue to seek special education teachers. One of the other major changes, if I can work the computer, let's go there, that was requested by the Omaha Education Association was the addition of alternative networks as an option for health insurance. After careful review, both the district and OEA agreed to providing teachers with three options or three networks for health insurance beginning next school year. In order to do this, we had to, in order to provide these alternative networks, we had to move to a plan with a $1,200 deductible. This is our current coverage plan with our current medical providers and our current coverage. The only difference is the $1,200 deductible instead of a $1,050 deductible, but this move allowed us to add the option for teachers to choose one of the two alternative networks. The first of these new networks is the Premium Select Blue Choice Network that has a zero-dollar deductible for teachers, so teachers will have no deductible if they choose this network. Do note that this is a limited network and limits employees to a smaller group of medical providers that is based around doctors and facilities associated with Nebraska Medicine, Methodist, and Bryan Health. The second alternative network is called Blueprint Health. Again, this is a zero-dollar deductible network for teachers to choose, and any teacher choosing to use this network will not have to pay a deductible. Again, this is also a limited network and it limits employees to a smaller group of medical providers that are based around CHI Health, Creighton Health, Allegiant, and Nebraska Both networks, both alternative networks do include Boys Town and Children's Hospital, as we do want to protect children. Employees will be asked to identify a specific network during open enrollment for insurance in the fall, and once they select that network, they will have to remain in that network for the entire year, and they can only change in the fall of 2022 at the next open enrollment cycle. The district will work with EHA and Blue Cross Blue Shield to begin educating staff on their options, assuming you approve this contract tonight in the next several weeks. We also adjusted the district contribution to rates to reflect the same percentage level of contribution that was originally negotiated two years ago in our current agreement with OEA. The second year, 2022, 2023, of the agreement reflects a five percent increase in these rates to protect employees against any insurance rate increase in the future year. Additionally, five hundred of the $1,000 added to base in 2022, 2023 school year was added to protect employees against a rate increase of more than five percent of their health We already mentioned the language changes around a remote teaching. One of the other big language changes in this contract is around secondary plan time. Previous contract language for secondary teachers provided a secondary teacher a number of periods of plan out of a total number of periods per day. This approach created inconsistency across the district as numbers of periods varied across schools, and even lengths of periods can vary across schools. The new approach that we agreed upon with OEA is guaranteeing secondary teachers three-hundred-and-fifty minutes of plan time in a five-day cycle, a week, regardless of the number of periods per day. This provides all teachers a consistent amount of plan time across secondaries across the district. This also provides the district flexibility as we look at high school programming changes and time for professional learning and collaboration within the school day for support teachers. Before I finish, I do want to thank the team of district administrators that helped us reach this agreement. Principal Tom Lee, his name is coming up frequently tonight, Dr. Monica Green from McMillan Middle School, Mary Greiger from Field Club Elementary, along with Ms. Megan Stevens from our legal office, all provided great support during the process. I also want to thank OEA leadership team for their hard work and willingness to openly discuss these issues. That discussion led us to a good agreement. That discussion led us to a good agreement. Board members, this is an agreement that supports teachers. This is an agreement that provides them fair compensation. This is an agreement that addresses their concerns about health insurance, and at the same time, it supports the district's move forward as we implement our strategic plan of action. I would recommend the board approve this agreement tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wakefield. Any questions? Mr. Snow?
Thank you, President Dr. Holman. I have a question for finance, just to make sure that we did budget this for, put in our I know the budget's not officially done for next school year, but we have prepared for these increases for next school year, is that correct?
Yes. Mr. Roberts was involved in, in planning for this, and this is included in our budgeting plans for next year.
And the 5%, is that something common? Or is it something that was, I mean, I'm saying common in this area, or is it something that's very rare? For special education?
The 5% is rare in this area. We do see across the nation signing bonuses for special education teachers. Not necessarily in the Midwest, but on the East and West Coast definitely, so that we are competing with those schools as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Tealyn?
Thank you, Dr. Holman. Can you speak a little bit to the plan time issue? Just kind of flesh out what it was before versus what it is now? I was a little unclear on how it was calculated before. Was it a teacher's number of periods, or the number of periods at a school, or?
Previous to this, this tentative agreement, plan time was based on a number of periods in a school day. So if a building was on eight periods in a school day, a teacher may get two of those as plan time. There was no consideration, though, within that contract for length of periods. When you talk about high school scheduling, you start talking about something called a skinny course, which is a course that is less minutes than the average courses. And so that created a, a large amount of inconsistency with teachers, somewhat within the same building, but definitely across the district of plan time. This guarantees every secondary teacher, middle or high school, has 350 minutes a week. And if a principal has time beyond that, that a teacher's not teaching, they can use that for department meetings, team meetings, collaboration time, professional learning to support those teachers. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much for the presentation, Mr. Wakefield, and thank you all who was involved in the, the planning and negotiations of this contract. I, I'm sure I can speak on behalf of my colleagues here at the table that we are most thrilled and excited for this contract and to have this positive collaboration and conversation, and to have it completed so early in the year and for two years, and so that, that's very exciting. So with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the proposed master agreement with the Omaha Education Association for the 2021, 2022, and 2022, 2023 school years.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Moved by Vice President Erdnberger, and seconded by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Question, yes, Mr. Snow?
Thank you, Dr. Holman. So, I know we, we struggle recruiting teachers, sorry, my thanks, no. Recruiting teachers across the district, across the Midwest. In our strategic plan, are we prepared to monitor this, to see if it helps us recruit and retain teachers? Are we prepared for that? And, and I'm not saying we're not, I'm, I don't want us to do this stuff and then not track if we're actually successful.
We monitor our recruiting at all times, looking at both where we get teachers from, and what type of teachers, what, what endorsement areas we go forward. Special ed is one of the hardest to fill, and there are limited places that we are very successful recruiting across the Midwest, so it's definitely something we'll continue to monitor. We're also very interested in the idea, we have teachers who teach in regular classroom, who have special ed endorsements, who have changed mid-career path, if we're able to entice any of them back into that special ed classroom to support those students.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Helps a lot.
Any other questions? Okay, roll call, Mr. Ray.
Snipes?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Tealyn?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Erdnberger?
Aye.
Haddon?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Crackey?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Nine-Nine?
Motion passes. Thank you, yes. Okay, moving on to J-2A information item C-BOK Phase II Bond Program update and presentation. And we have Bradley Bogonowski, did I pronounce that correctly? Great, thank you. Colonel, sorry, my paper did not say that, I apologize. And Councilman Rogers is here as well.
Dr. Holman? Good evening, President Holman, Vice President Erdnberger, Dr. Logan, and esteemed board members. My name is Brad Bogonowski, I'm the Omaha Public Schools Construction Supervisor for the bond. Also on attendance is Zionah Boykins, Omaha Public Schools Economic Inclusion Workforce Development Administrator, as mentioned, Citizens Bond Oversight Committee Member, Mr. Christopher Rogers. We're excited to, to provide an update of the Phase II Bond Program to you this evening. During this presentation, we'll update you on Phase II financials, economic inclusion, master schedule, and high-level project status. There are 25 schools involved in this bond issue in different stages of construction, design, construction, closeout, or complete. The latest slide will indicate specific schools and what stage they are in. The total bond two, the total Phase II Bond Program budget is $409,900,000. Our team has been diligent throughout the bond to work with our architecture and construction managers at risk to ensure our forecasted costs remain within those limits. Our total program cost forecast remains at $409,900,000. This cost forecast includes $500,000 earmark for possible COVID-19 impact in the, in the areas of potential labor, materials delays, or a need for acceleration. Obviously, if this amount is not needed for COVID, it will be rolled back in to the bond. Interest earned on the bond to date is $2,541,776. We've committed $2 million back into a bond middle school for repurposing the auditorium at Morton, creating four classrooms and a multipurpose room. The general S curve that you see on, on the chart regarding expenditures over time and the forecast, and the remainder of the cash flow to maintain budget, is what we're after on the expenditures and cash flow chart. Economic inclusion is divided into two categories, small emerging, emerging business utilization and, and student engagement. Program contract commitment to date for the bond is nearly $300 million, or just over 72% of the whole. We have a total S E B contract commitment of over $20 million, or 6.9% of the second phase of the bond. S E B expenditures to date equal a little over $9 million, or 3.14%. Our teams continue to engage with our construction managers to identify and offer post-bid opportunities that S E Bs can potentially capitalize on. Our good faith effort data indicates our construction managers have contacted over 1,800 S E Bs, or of those, 282 sent bids back to us, and 76 S E Bs were awarded work. Our architecture and construction partners continue to devise ways to engage students by developing interactive offerings, exposing those students to science, technology, engineering, art, architecture, and mathematic career fields. The master schedule display is a bit of an eye chart, but what you're looking at is the five-year span of the Phase II bond, from August 2018 with the yellow blocks indicating the design stages of the first schools to the dark green and blue blocks in 2023, with occupying the newly-built middle school at 42nd and Y Street, and closeouts of the final schools' updates. You can see we're roughly halfway through the, the Phase II timeline, with the red lines in the center. Master schedule also on the board website, uh, sorry, uh, this, this master schedule is also on the, the bond website, which is at bond.org, dot O P S, dot O R G. Let me try it again, bond.org, O P S, dot O R G. All projects are tracking well. If you want information about a specific project, please let Mr. Ray know. We can get you information on that specific school. The Phase II program status slide lists each school at what stage they are within the entire process. You can see we've moved off a bid and award, mostly in construction, and moving toward the, the complete. This was a fairly high-level presentation. If you have specific questions about a school or any part of our work, or are interested in touring any of the sites, please let Mr. Ray know, and we'll work with you, with him, sorry, to answer your, your more detailed questions or schedule time to visit a school. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Any questions? Okay, Mr. Snow?
Thank you, Dr. Holman. Welcome, finally. Good to meet you in person. So I have just like, some of these are just clarifying questions, um, so bear with me here. Let's go to the slide four, the Phase II Bond Program Economic Conclusion. So of these S E Bs that, the 76 that were awarded, are you tracking them? Are these the same S E, most of them from the first bond and transition into the second bond? Or are these completely new individuals? Does that make any sense?
It does.
Because if you got $9 million here and you had $7 on the last, I mean, there's a millionaire somewhere.
Good evening, Mr. Snow. I would say a good portion of the, um, Phase II are different S E Bs that are being utilized for, for this work. We've got a little different, um, different projects, and so we have, uh, there, some of them are a little bit more sophisticated, and so we have a, a number of, of, um, S E Bs that have joined that, that, that process.
Underst, okay, so I, I do understand that, because most of this is like large purchasing and, uh, how do we define them as an S E B compared to the original Phase I S E Bs, if that makes any sense?
And I, I'd be happy to, to pull more information and get that to you.
Okay. I, I just want to be able to distinguish that, because in my sub-district, you could talk about a lot of construction, but with the majority of the people don't see it. So you have to be able to explain where the actual numbers and the dollars are. And I think if you can develop kind of a sheet where some of these S E Bs are located, and kind of pull them in subgroups of districts, you can actually see where that money's going, to help those communities, because the original plan of this was to make sure that, um, any projects that the district participated in, we wanted to make sure that there wasn't an external group that comes in, builds the facility, and leaves. We wanted to make sure that, uh, some of the people in the community have an opportunity, not just to be able to bid, but actually get the reward and be able to move on that. The second question is the student engagement. I know it's really hard with COVID. Is that even happening still, or is, is that, how's that even?
Yeah, so we, actually, there's been a number of, of contractors and architects and engineering firms that have been a part of, for instance, let's see, at Morton, they had a career fair fairly recently, within the, the past couple of months. We're continuing to find different opportunities, working with curriculum specialists, as well as, now that we have the after-school programming starting back up, we'll be working with Collective for Youth to incorporate some of those in the after-school programming. We've also had presentations, we've been working with Boeing to, to find out how we can work with Beth Maloney and Tina Buddha in order to get in front of those fifth-grade students. So we, we're working on that student engagement project, those projects, and continuing to have daily conversations with our, our contractors and architects.
I understand, and I know you're the first person in your job, so you're creating this all on you. Who's in charge of that, or responsible for the student engagement? Is it the contractor, or is there someone at the district that is responsible for connecting this student or these students to the projects, tracking them, and making sure that when they do graduate, when the projects are over, it wasn't just a field trip to a construction site?
Most definitely. Um, both Cameron, Gales, and I of Jacobs are really working with those contractors and architects to not only make those virtual connections at the schools, but then also really making sure that it connects maybe to the curriculum, or we're, we're trying to find ways in which it's going to be more enriching to, to each of those, those students that are meeting with those, those contractors and architects too, so.
One more question, I know they're looking at me. Is there a dollar amount? Uh, so bond leftover dollars from first bond, how much was that left over?
Roughly about 1.8 million.
What did we do with that?
We have rolled it back into expanded scope on bond schools from 2014 to, to actually be flexed toward life, health, safety. Because with, with each of those 2014s, they didn't necessarily get the full package for each one, so we had to make decisions, as I understand it, in 2014 and through that bond, to, to complete that work. So whatever work was, was left that could potentially come up as an add alternate, for instance, we went ahead and, and flexed that money toward it.
Was that stuff that was brought to the board of education?
Correct.
To approve?
As, as far as I know, Mr. Snow, and I can absolutely
Okay.
Make sure and
What's the process for this one? For ba, Phase II leftover dollars? Well, correct, but we don't know those, we, the first, if I'm correct, the first bond, we did identify, these are the leftover projects that if we had dollars, we'd go back to. I don't think we have that for Phase II, or
We, we'll get that, yeah, we'll get that information for you. I don't, I don't have it offhand, but we can get that information for you.
Okay. It'd just be very appreciated there. That's all I have. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Mr. Tealyn?
Thank you, Dr. Holman. Um, I'm, I'm reading this, and I think you're, I think you've covered it here, I just want to make sure I'm understanding. It's, it appears that we are on budget and on time, is that?
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other que, Ms. Cassidy?
Thank you. I just have a quick question, kind of piggybacks, Mr. Snow's. Just curious, I kind of came in at the tail end of the 2014 bond, um, onto the board, and the 2018 was raring to go. What, um, what were the, were there projections for the S E Bs? Like, we have a 6.96 commitment. Did we have a hope or prediction of what we wanted that to be? And did we, ballpark, did we come close, I guess, to where we?
Sure.
If that makes sense?
Yes.
If you know, I was gonna say you might not.
We had an aspirational goal of 15%, and so we are really working hard to find ways in order to incorporate S E Bs into some of the wrap-up processes as these projects are, are finishing up, as well as getting more unbundling, um, projects.
Sure.
So we're getting the contractors to continue to, to think about ways in which they can kind of break up some of those projects for S E B utilization.
Is the 1872 that submitted contracts, is that a number that, is that a low number? Is that a high number? Is that kind of what you expected as far as?
The 1872 is actually the number that the, the contractor, the construction contractor contacted.
Oh, okay, that's a contact, okay.
Correct.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay, just kind of wondered, those numbers comparable from the 2014 bond? Thank you.
So, did you, did you need the, the exact amount as transferring over from the, the, the first bond?
Do you know that offhand? I was gonna say, I didn't know if you would have that information.
It was about a 12.96% as we finished up from the, so the aspirational goal of the 2014 bond was 7%. We met that with flying colors, and so then the aspirational goal was at 15% for this one, or the current, uh, Phase II.
for this bond, or the current bond, Phase Two.
Any other questions? Ms. Erdemberger.
Thank you, Dr. Holman. I think I'm going to follow up on what Mrs. Cassidy just said. So we have an aspirational goal. Do these numbers look like we're going to get there? Is what I'm trying to figure out from what you're saying.
We're working hard to to try to
I'm sure you are.
Obviously, with COVID and a number of other situations that have occurred, we're, we're really pushing for that and hoping for the best.
So the pace is a little off than it was before, but that's explainable. Okay. I also want to follow up on what Mr. Snow was asking. I would love to get more specific information, so I don't want to put you on the spot here, but I would love to get more specific information about the student engagement. I was surprised, for example, when one of your examples was the career fair of fifth grade. I'm like, oh, that's a good idea. So, I mean, it sounds like it's a very interesting effort. I would love to get more specifics about how it's going, recognizing that you're within COVID limits. But that's such an essential step in what is going on in Nebraska, is to get kids interested in this field. So I'd love to see how much engagement we're getting, and like Mr. Snow said, any follow-up information you have.
Sure.
So I don't know if you want to wait until, I don't know what the process is for getting more information.
We can, we can get that to you.
But that, I would just be really interested in that.
Like, one of the pictures up here, I'm not sure if that's the exact photo, but there's one of 60th and L's where, where we have students from South High School that have worked on the Commons mural project. We had a group of students that followed all the way through that process and continued to go to the the work site even during the summer. Some of them even committed, some of them actually even graduated and still came back during the summer and helped out with that that project. So those students that that have been really interested in this work have really been committed to it, and it's, it's really been fun to see them really excited about being a part of it. So they've worked with the architecture firms in order to to kind of pull up pictures and and find ways to incorporate images of South Omaha that will go into that mural in 60th and L in the Commons area. So the students that have been able to really interact with the the architects and the contractors have been genuinely excited about the the projects too, so.
That's a really good example. I used to teach at North High School, and I know our engineering kids would get real involved in various architect projects. So I know that it, it works. So I, I would, like I said, be interested in getting more information. Another question that I don't mean to put you on the spot, but since all of this started, because of COVID, air filtration and circulation and things have all become something that probably wasn't as higher priority, or the nature of it wasn't the same when you got started. Have any adjustments been made in that regard to, you know, some of the higher standards that may have developed since we've found ourselves in this situation?
Vice President, I'd like to get back to you on that one. I want to make sure we get the details correct for you.
Okay. And just curious, my last one was on that very colorful slide, which I thought was really interesting. And thank you, Dr. Holman, for showing me how to expand my screen. I do notice that the, the, some of the schools are still in the design phase, the yellow at the bottom. Was that just how we intended to do it from the get-go, or was there some reason that those are what I would consider to be behind?
So we decided, and Jacobs probably decided as as a consultant to us, that can't do them all at once.
Sure.
Only have limited number of project managers and and probably how much maybe effort that that OPS could take at at one time too. So that's why they're spread across the continuum there.
So that really was part of the plan?
Correct.
As opposed to there was some cat catastrophe that occurred, so you couldn't get to it?
Correct.
Thank you. That's exactly what I needed, and I look forward to seeing you guys again. Thank you.
Ms. Erdemberger, they're staged over time. So that's, that's what, that's what you're seeing. So some will begin, sometimes we adjust the schedule, so that we do not have children in schools that are, have so much construction, that was something that we learned from Phase One, to make sure that we have certain projects at certain times of year, if this is summertime, so that we do not impact student learning or create conditions that are not really conducive to student teaching and learning.
Any other questions? Thank you all so much for the presentation. And Commissioner Rogers, my apologies for not acknowledging you earlier during the meeting. Thank you so much for being here.
Commissioner Rogers, is there something that you would like to, as a taxpayer, as well as member of the C-BUS?
No, I say, on behalf of the committee, we thank you for the opportunity. Can do nothing but commend the staff for how they've adjusted in this time of COVID. And I can say with great integrity to the citizens that the caliber of project that's going on is the standard. I was fortunate enough to go on the tour at 60th and L, very impressive building. I have to think about my six-year-old going there when he has his opportunity. Very impressive. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thanks for being here. Okay. Well, we have one receded report. That is a District English Learner and Refugee Report for 2020, 2021. And moving on to closed session, Vice President Erdemberger.
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, and Legal Counsel, Personnel Matters, Negotiations, and Real Estate.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion by, going to closed session, by Ms. Erdemberger, and seconded by Mr. Teal. Roll call, please, Mr. Ray.
Snow.
Yes, aye.
Teal.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdemberger.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snipes.
Aye.
Nine-Eyed.
Motion carries. Let me remind the Board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, and Legal Counsel, Personnel Matters, Negotiation, and Real Estate. Let the record reflect that the Board went into closed session at 7:54 PM.
Let the record reflect that we came out of closed session at 8:47 PM. Meeting adjourned.